Good evening, everybody. I will call this regular council meeting of Estevan City Council, July 17th, to order. As you'll notice, I am not his worship, the mayor. I am filling in while he is away on vacation, which he has not taken any of us on again this time. I'd also like to recognize Counselor Walidzer is not here this evening. She is joining us via Zoom. If there are any questions from her, we will see her up on the screens. For starters, we will get a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Counselor Clark? Counselor Cernick? All in favor? Carry. And then next, we'll get an adoption of the agenda. Counselor Veroba? Counselor Clark? All in favor? Carry. Yeah. First on the agenda this evening, we have a presentation from SAS Power, "The Fish Study at Boundary Dam", presented by Chris Summers. Welcome this evening. You guys can press the mic and start off.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and thank you very much for taking the time to have us come visit. We're going to tell you about a joint research project that's been undertaken by Department of Biology at the University of Regina in partnership with SAS Power. And it's actually going to be co-presented by myself. I'm Dr. Chris Summers. I'm a biology professor at the University of Regina. And Katlin McCallum, who is a master's student, graduate student, who is basically dedicating two years of her life to the Boundary Reservoir System here. So she's going to tell us a lot about what's going on on a day-to-day basis there. So we have been working on the reservoir for some time now and have some pretty interesting information, data. And the program is growing. And I think it's a great opportunity just to share some of that with you folks tonight. So, next slide, please. Part of my research program at the University of Regina involves fish and fisheries research. So I run a group called the Saskatchewan Sport Fish Research Group. We do a whole variety of things with respect to fish and to conservation and management of fisheries in the province of Saskatchewan and also elsewhere. And we have a Facebook page that folks are welcome to follow. And we post regularly about activities that we are undertaking, including those here in the Estevan area. So if you're into social media and want to see some of what's going on, that's a good source for it. Next slide, please. So I want to start off with a bit of basic biology. So I'm a biology professor, and you guys can't get away without a bit of a lecture here from the bio guy. So Saskatchewan is a cold place. We are continental climates. We have a long cold winter, a very short hot summer. And everything about the biology of the organisms that live here is influenced by that climate-extreme type of scenario. So part of my research program is on winter ecology of fish. And this is our same lab truck and setup that we're using right now on the reservoir here, except for instead of a trailer, we have a boat. And instead of driving on three feet of ice, we are out there on the open water. So we all know Saskatchewan gets cold. And we all have an idea that this northern climate determines what kind of plants and animals live here. Next slide, please. That is true for everywhere in the province with two exceptions. You know, our lakes, our aquatic ecosystems have particular species that live there based on the climate. But the Poplar River Plant near Coronac and Cookson Reservoir and the Boundary Dam Power Station and the Boundary Dam Reservoir here are quite different in that they've been relieved of some of that cold pressure because of decades of warm water effluent coming from electricity production, which all of you folks know very well. And that makes them very different from other lakes, other ecosystems in the province. And we honestly, from a fisheries and aquatic ecology perspective, don't know that much about them. But we do know that they're going to be different. We do know they're going to be unique. And of course, the Boundary Dam Reservoir here has its famous large north bass population, which is the only place in Saskatchewan where that species was able to get a permanent foothold at the time that they were stocked. And hopefully, most of the folks here have been out and had a chance to angle for large north bass. But to give you some perspective, they are by far the most popular freshwater game fish in the United States and generate, you know, tens of billions of dollars in revenue in that country every year. And the fact that they're the only, but the only place we can even see them in Saskatchewan is here in the Estevan area is a pretty fantastic opportunity for anglers. Now, the question becomes, what happens with the changing energy industry and the idea that we may be turning off that source of warm water in both of these places, at Cookson End and Boundary? And I've spent a lot of time since about 2010 working with the nuclear power industry in Ontario, trying to understand the opposite question. So when they generate nuclear power, they put a lot of waste heat out into places like Lake Huron, Lake Ontario. And they're always concerned about what happens when they're heating up their fish too much. We have the opposite issue here, which is if we turn off that warm water, is this warm water community that we've created in these places going to experience some significant change? And if so, what is that change going to look like? And that's the gist of the program that we have undertaken here. Next slide, please. So we have, since last year, had a full-time team of students that are here during the open water months. And what does that mean for Boundary? That means when half of it is basically open, because half of it doesn't freeze. But the crew that you see here spends basically every single day out on the reservoir, taking measurements of the environment, trying to understand who lives there and where they are, and basically how important that hot water effluent is as a driving force behind the ecosystem that's there. And in fact, Kat and I spent the day out on the reservoir today doing some sampling. And this crew is out there, the picture that you see, on a daily basis. So at this point, I think I'm going to turn it over to Kat and have her tell you about some of the specific research things that we've been doing and some of the very interesting findings that are coming out of the program.
Sure. Thanks, Chris. Hi, everyone. My name's Kat, and I started working on my masters at the U of R in January of 2022. And I'm hoping to wrap it up by the end of this year. As Chris said, I spend all day, every day on Boundary for the last summer. And I'm halfway through my second field season here. It's been really great so far. So a little bit about the things that we do on a day-to-day basis. We are looking at the environmental characteristics in Boundary as they are currently. This will provide a really great baseline for the future as things continue to change. We're also looking into the larger fish biology and ecology, as well as the smaller fish community in Boundary through a variety of methods. And for any of you who have spent any time on Boundary, you may have noticed that there is abundance of turtles out there as well. So we do happen to catch quite a few of those in our fishnet. So with that, we decided to add a turtle component to our research as well. And next, please. As Chris mentioned, it's a very unique place. So temperature influences all aspects of the aquatic ecosystem, starting right at the bottom with the little things like the zooplankton and invertebrates, and all the way up to the big fish. So in the eighties, with that warm water, the Ministry of Environment saw the opportunity to stock the largemouth bass, which are typically a warmer-water fish. This created that unique angling opportunity for Saskatchewan. And it has been extremely popular and brings tourism dollars and all sorts of people to Estevan just for the bass. And then, of course, as Chris mentioned, there is the heat aspect of Boundary that is super unusual as well, creating atypical temperatures for our Saskatchewan water body. And then with that, the question of what will happen to the aquatic ecosystem as a whole and in particular, those warmer-water largemouth bass. So that was how our research was sparked. Next slide, please. And so we are keeping a close eye on the temperature throughout the reservoir. We have 11 temperature logging stations throughout the reservoir, starting right close to the intake by Boundary Dam Power Station, all the way down to the far south end. So we tried to get a nice coverage of the reservoir and to get a feel for the temperatures right in that hot water return, as well as the far south end, which is mostly influenced by the natural creek. And so if you guys have ever been out on the reservoir and seen an orange buoy close to shore, it's probably ours. And that's just one of our temperature monitoring stations hard at it. And so this is a look at the temperature output from one of those logging stations. This one is just south of that hot water return. So this is from the open water season last year, beginning in May, ending in October. So they're also measuring light penetration. And that's in the green there. So we can see that it's pretty variable throughout the open water season. The blue is the temperature. And it's following a normal trajectory there, getting warmer in the summer and cooling right down in the fall. But it does peak at 32 degrees in August of last year, which is very warm. That is over 10 degrees warmer than our native species prefer. And it's even warmer than the warmer-water largemouth bass prefer as well. So the temperature monitoring goes on year-round, even when I'm not here. We have those top-set loggers that I just showed you in the last slide. But we also bottom-set them during the winter season, so they're monitoring temperature all year round. And that's just what the loggers look like in that bottom-left corner there. Just a little button, that's basically it. And yeah, we set them on the bottom of the reservoir, so they aren't influenced by the ice. We have run into a little bit of a hiccup with some of our bottom-set loggers. When we had set them originally, they were tethered to shore. Since then, however, the water levels have gone up quite significantly. So shore is no longer there. So as a result, we've had to look for our loggers by numerous methods, including snorkeling. We've found most of them, but there is still two out there that we have yet to find. Water levels are coming down quite rapidly this past while. So hopefully, that will give us a chance to find our last two. And that picture's just what they look like after several years underwater in Boundary. And this is just a look at multi-season temperature data from one of the loggers that we have found. So this is from logger five, which is about halfway down the reservoir, but still fairly close to that hot water return. So again, it follows a fairly normal trend, getting much cooler in the winter and peaking in the summer at around 29 degrees, which again, is very warm. And the winter temperature range ranges in that 1 to 4 or so range for both winter seasons. And so we are looking into the fish community through various methods. Our main method is shown in the big picture there. Those are called pike nets. So they are a form of live capture. They allow us to catch fish and bring them onboard to do our measurements and return them back to the reservoir unharmed. So while onboard, we take measurements like length, weight. We note general health indicators, take aging structures, and also insert a small external tag into all or most of the fish that we catch before releasing them back to the reservoir. So this is our data from last year. We caught 679 fish over the course of the summer through various methods from five different species. So we caught walleye, northern pike, largemouth bass, white sucker, and yellow perch. And as you can see by this pie chart here, walleye dominated our catch. They seem to be doing really well in Boundary. The bass are a little bit interesting. They tend to avoid or evade capture in typical fisheries methods. So they may be a little bit underrepresented here. They're what's known as trap shy. They just avoid nets of all sorts. So one of our main methods of capture is scientific angling. And we just love this picture. So we've got a turtle, a bass, and a pike. And really, only in Boundary could you have those three things that were caught in one net altogether. And we just wanted to highlight a few of our tagged fish returns. So as I mentioned, most of the fish that we catch get a small external tag. They have a unique identifier on them and an email address to report that if you caught a tagged fish. Chris does this kind of work all over Saskatchewan. And we have quite a few tagged fish out there in Boundary now. So yeah, some interesting stories came out of it. There was one tagged, a northern pike tagged on September 5th, 2021, near the intake into Boundary Dam Power Station. And it traveled down to, close to Crosby, North Dakota, and was captured by an angler June 1st, 2022. So pretty far distance. We suspect it was maybe looking for good spawning habitat. And here's another one. So this one was tagged an opening weekend last year at the Estevan Wildlife Federation Walleye Tournament on May 7th. And just a few weeks later, on May 24th, it was caught in the same spot by Crosby, North Dakota. So it really, really took off in a short amount of time to hop the border and get tricked into biting a hook again. So. And with that, I'd like to just acknowledge everyone who's helping make our research possible and open the floor for questions.
Well, thank you very much. I will, yeah. Any of our councillors have any questions regarding the presentation? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. How long, how much longer is this project going to run? Do you guys have a timeline? Is it going to be another couple summers? Or is it done after the end of this year?
I view it to be just the beginning, because we are just entering, you know, the changes to the energy production and the use of the reservoir for cooling water have really just started. And so what we are doing now is almost a baseline. And we will continue into 2030 is my plan. So basically, a continuous running program until at least that time.
Counselor Cernick?
Have you caught any monsters out there?
We'll let Kat answer this one. She's the fish person. I'm the paper guy.
Yes, he supervises from afar. We've caught some pretty sizable walleye for sure. And an interesting finding with the bass is that the majority of them are kind of all in the same size range. We catch little babies. We catch big ones. Not very many of the in-between. So yeah, we've caught some pretty decent bass and yeah, some fairly big walleye as well.
So I do think it's worth noting that the bass in the reservoir here are on par with anything you can catch in the United States. So if you go to northern Texas and fish bass and you come out with an average of, say, 2 to 4 pounds per fish, that's a good day. And if you're on Boundary, the fish are the same. So it's pretty, anyway, I won't go out too far.
No, excellent.
Counselor Veroba?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for coming tonight. My husband has had a bass fishing boat for basically 25 years. So he is an avid fisherman out there. But it also sounds like Crosby has some pretty good fishermen out there, too. So we have to have a battle of the fishermen. The catch and release. So basically, I hear a lot of people go fishing and they catch and release. So do people still send in that data? Like, do you have any data to say how many of those fish have been caught, released, and then recought? Or most of your data come from fish that were caught and taken home?
I guess I'll tackle that one, because it kind of, there's a big and a little picture there. So we've tagged somewhere in the order of 16,000 or 17,000 fish in Saskatchewan over the last five years. And that's one of the very interesting parts that I'm curious about, is how often do people keep versus release? And it's a little biased with tagfish, because when people see a tag, they sometimes choose to release it if they might have kept it if it wasn't tagged. But in this case, we are getting a fair number of tag returns from Boundary, from the walleye that we've tagged there. And a good number of them are being released, not kept to be eaten. We did attempt a bass tagging program a few years ago. The bass unfortunately have a microbial community in the slime on their skin that doesn't allow them to tolerate a tag very well. They get a big abscess where the tag goes into the skin. So we had to stop that. But we did get multiple recaptures of bass as well. So I'm not sure if I answered the question in there somewhere, but...
Anyone else? If not, I think Counselor Cernick would like to...
Just to thank you for sharing this info. And thank you for coming tonight. Just have a couple small gifts.
Well, thank you very much. It's our pleasure to have a chance to chat.
Do what you can do to save the bass.
Beautiful. So it goes right with the bass on my shirt.
We, of course, have a great hope that your bass fish will save our power plant or anything else that can. But of course, we appreciate all the hard work you're putting in and the research you're doing, because it's valuable for our community, for our environment, for everything. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And we are always open to chat if you guys think of anything you want to talk about after the meeting's over. Kat and her crew are in Estevan until the end of August. So, you know, by all means, we are always happy to chat about the program.
Yeah, if you see a pontoon boat doing something weird on the reservoir, it's probably us, just let it down.
That's good to know. Counselor Ford has a question.
Sorry, my last question. It's kind of towards administration. Would it be possible, and maybe helpful for you guys, maybe you guys can pipe him, too, for us to maybe put out a social media post to say, hey, if you do catch a fish with a tag on it, whether you choose to release it or keep it, please kind of submit your data? Because I'm sure there are people who see it and they're like, I'll get to this later, take a picture of it, and never, ever do it, right? Would it be helpful for you guys if we did that?
Absolutely. Yes, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Great idea, Counselor Ford. I'm sure City Manager will take care of that. And my one last one, Dr. Summers, is my good wife, Dr. Mand Olson, is tuning in. And I guess she was a student of yours, so she says hi. So thanks for that welcome Estevan connection.
There's nowhere I can escape.
That's right. So thank you guys so much. The mayor would implore me to say, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. You're welcome to leave as well if you prefer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Moving on. Next up, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have Gail Tzlanzvik with Mural Proposals. Gail, if you'd like to step up to the microphone. Gail is a member of our Estevan Arts Council Committee. And I will let you take it away.
Okay, and I just, they're already gone, but we should add that to our tourism in case we're not promoting bigmouth bass. Just throwing that out there. So the Estevan Arts Council is, would really love to continue beautifying Estevan. As many of you know, that's been my...
It's off. Sorry, Gail, your microphone's off. If you can switch on. There we go.
Okay. The Estevan Arts Council would love to continue beautifying Estevan. As many of you know, it has been a passion of mine since I moved here pretty much. And I hope I've done my part, at least a little. So a little history, the last year, the Arts Council put up three benches, three new murals on the side of Pharmisave, one at the, a small one at the back of the garden on Fourth, and contributed to BJ Zeiger for, to the Zeigers, for their mural on the side of Blunt Expressions. So these took pretty much all my budget and a tad more to complete. So that's pretty much what we did last year for the Arts Council. We also keep up the case at the Leisure Center and promote different artists, change it out on a regular basis. And we did a pottery class. And we ran a Great Create group this winter, where people were invited to just come and create something. And honestly, we had a phenomenal turnout for that every week. So anyway, so I guess our budget last year was $10,000. That's what we got again this year. So we donated the balance of our budget after we did the projects above to the Zeigers toward their cactus mural on Blunt Expressions. As BJ's and I know several council members had talked about this, that we had gotten the same artist to do everything. And I just wanted you all to know that we only helped BJ with one mural, which we donated towards that. The rest, he either did out of pocket or the owners of the buildings hired him to do those. But out of pocket, he did the Parrot mural downtown, both murals at Sussex Arms, the Shark at the landfill, and the newest one, which is the Girl on the Side of Exhale. So anyway, this year, we would love to do more personally. So I hope you all have the Water Tower, or the, yeah, the Water Tower art in front of you. Oh, there it is. So that has been, that was a proposal submitted. And honestly, I love it. I think it says exactly what we want to say about Estevan. So that would run us $10,000, approximately that. Right now, BK has done our work. He did like the installations on the side of Pharmisave. He does an amazing job. Attention to detail is incredible. But, so I have a quote from him for, it's about $10,000, depending on how big we make it. So this one would go on the side of Kessel Run Games. The owner there has given us permission to do whatever we want. And the approximate size would be 45 by 10. So and BJ has proposed several murals, which he brought to you guys previously, or had brought murals. Anyway, we have several buildings that we have permission to do those as well once we have money. And then whatever the artwork is, the owners have final approval. So one of those, our two favorite spots anyway, are the loft at the Tower Parking Lot. And the other one is the west side of the Trout Building. And the Legion would love a mural on the front of their building. We've made it our rule that the owners cannot dictate what we put on there, because if they're going to dictate, then they should probably pay for it. But the Legion said, gee, we'd love to have something on the front. We have an artist who's willing to do it, donating her time. And then we would print it like we've done with the benches and the side of Pharmisave. And the same with that, the one here that was up there. It would be vinyl printed. And the artist has offered to do that, to submit his work at no cost to us. So awesome. All in the spirit of beautifying Estevan. So anyway, this artist is working on those. And so we'll see. The Legion is also willing to donate a little bit of money towards that to help out. So here's my dilemma, because I usually have one. We would love to do more benches like we did last year. We would love to replace the peeling mural at TD Bank, do a few of the light boxes that we were given permission to do, the Water Tower mural, and at least one of BJ's submissions. But I got the same budget of $10,000 that I got last year, which I used that and more to do what we did last year. So the Water Tower mural, like I said, would run about $10,000. So this pheasant mural that was up here a few minutes ago, and that, by the way, that Water Tower mural, it would have to be redone to fit the space. And I think it was cleaned up. It would have to be cleaned up and, you know. So that was just a quick submission, I think. Anyway, and the pheasant mural painted directly on a building. And I think I included another one. He said he would jazz it up a little bit if we wanted. So this was just something I found where, you know, it's realistic, but it still has artistic value. And I think that's pretty cool. Anyway, BJ is willing to, you know, to work with it, to do whatever. Anyway, so something like that would run approximately $25,000, depending on the building that we pick and the size of that. He's also designed one for the side of the theater, which is really cool. That's about $36,000. But that's not on my agenda for this year. There's other things I would rather see. Anyway, that being said, with the budget that I do have, it's either I do the Water Tower mural or four or five of the smaller projects and call it good. So I'm thinking that any commitment I could get from the city would be awesome. And again, it's to beautify the city. And I hope that we did a good enough job last year that you all have faith in us and could see your way to, you know, supporting this effort. So anyway, that being said, do you all have any questions?
Counselor Cernick, or sorry, Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just thanks for coming, Gail. I've certainly been a big proponent of what you're doing in the city. And I think it's important. I think we've started something here. And I think it's, you know, I don't want to see it die and trickle in. I'd like to see us kind of get the growth going. So I would support that. I think I'd like to hear the other councillors talk first. And then maybe we can talk about what we can do for you. So hopefully, we can tonight. But I'm going to let the other councillor speak.
Thank you.
Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
I'm learning why.
I knew you were reading.
I'm learning a lot about this two-sided looking. Yeah. I have a lot more respect for his worship.
So, Gail, I'm just wondering, is it possible that you actually did up a proposal on paper with exactly what you're interested in doing this year? Because I kind of got lost with all the figures you were throwing out there.
Okay. So what I would really like to do, well, again, what I want to do is have more money, but I don't.
Right.
But my top priorities are, either with my $10,000 budget that I have, I do the Estevan, that mural right there, or I do the smaller ones, the benches, the, a couple more benches, the light boxes, another little mural, about the same amount that I did last year. I can do either or. And that's all I can do. But I would love to see this up. But, you know, so anyway, either or is what I would like to see.
Is if you got another, say, $5,000?
It wouldn't do me any good.
Wouldn't do you any good. See, that's what I was wondering, because I was hearing like $37,000 different numbers like that.
Sorry, sorry.
That's why I feel like a written proposal would be better for us to look at.
Okay, well, my...
And for you to hammer down what you'd actually liked, like, put in, and then have an actual dollar amount that you would like put in. And then we can see if we can do that this year.
Okay. So how, like, how long would it be before I knew that? What I would really like to see is at least $10,000 for that, and then I already have my $10,000. And if y'all really, really like me, you would give me $35,000, which would be $25 for BJ's mural and, and $10,000 for that mural. And then I can take the Arts Council money and actually do the other artist in town on it, like the smaller things. So, honestly, $35, $40,000 would be awesome to get two big projects off the ground this year, which I can pull off no problem this year, or, so that's what I'd really look for. And then if y'all don't help, then I just make the decision on whether I do this, or I do the smaller projects.
So, $10,000 or $35,000 is what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, $10,000, I mean, really, yeah, $10,000 would do this, and $35,000 would do this and another bigger mural. So, it just depends on how many you would like to, to see this year. So, I mean, and-
And so, Kate, so just to back up, what is the original $10,000 going towards?
Either this, if you, or the, two more benches, the same amount that we did last year. Two more benches, a smaller mural, and the light boxes.
So, if you got just $10,000 more, you would be able to do this mural, plus the smaller light boxes, plus the smaller projects? You just wouldn't do the other projects?
Wouldn't do the one big mural, which I would really like to see the big mural, like to have an actual painted one. BJ has done all of these murals out of pocket.
Right, but it is something that we could move to discussion for next year, because that is a large ask to come to council for one night.
Go big or go home.
Well, that's true. I would like to hear from the city manager what the budget is looking like if the extra $10,000 was to come into play tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Roba. I'd have to go look at the finances at this point. I wouldn't have those off the top of my head.
I have Counsel Ford next.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I, I agree with Counsel Roba. I really do like seeing things on paper. So, that would be something I would also request tonight, but also kind of a strategic plan, if you do have one for the next couple of years, because tonight you're coming, you're saying, okay, 40 grand would do me for the year, but then I'm worried that next year you're gonna say, okay, no, I need 80 grand for the next year. It's gonna build and build, because we have so many places to put art in the city, and I'm-
We really don't. I actually-
You find lots of them anyway.
Yeah, there's really not a lot of walls that work, not big ones, anyway. So, I know that in the past, the city was willing to do some big murals. Honestly, it's a huge job. I'm pretty much it for the, for the visual arts. So, I mean, I do have a few helpers. They have full-time jobs, and honestly, it's really hard to get, you know, too much of a commitment out of them. So, it's a lot of work. A lot of cities do their own murals, and so I think that me doing them is like doing y'all's, you know, I mean, really doing like, not y'all's work, because you don't have to do them, but it certainly takes a lot off your plate when I'm the one making sure that things are primed properly and, and everything like that looked after. Next year, BJ might not be here. I've called, I've done calls for art. I've had lots of submissions, but nothing big unless it's done on vinyl print. So, having, you know, having something actually painted is really wonderful, but there's not many artists that are willing to do it in person, and that's just pretty cool to have that. So, so there is that. I can definitely do it up. But like, like I said, I mean, next year, sure, I might want to do the, a huge mural, but hopefully, I would plan it a little faster than I did this year. I was busy in the garden. But, I mean, it's, it, it benefits the city, and the Arts Council, I mean, that's really not our mandate. Our mandate is to run classes, which I'm just not, I would rather do this. So, at some point, they may say, yeah, you're not, we don't want you doing that anymore, and, and then y'all can just do whatever, you know, whatever. But I, I just, I would love to see it done, and that's my thought.
We do appreciate all that you've done and all the hard work that you've put in. So, I guess to better phrase my question, a written proposal of what you want this year, and then maybe make just a wish list of the next two years that you want, a wish list, and say, this is what I want to see in the next couple of years, and then we can kind of start planning going forward as well.
I can definitely do that, yeah. I can definitely do that.
Counselor Roba.
If that was Counsel Ford's motion, was to just table this until we get a written proposal, and basically with a bit of a plan, then I would second that, accept.
Counsel Ford, is that your motion? That's Counsel Ford's motion. Counsel Roba has seconded. Any other questions? Counsel Clark.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. I just, I think probably one of the concerns is the timeframe, that if we wait till the next month, can, will, will that put everything off for the year?
Yeah, I won't get, if, if I don't here for another month, I probably, I probably will not get a lot done. Just, yeah, I mean, I might not. Probably could only pull off one, and that would be, yeah, that would probably be about it. I don't know.
Counsel Roba.
How long would it take you to be able to do the proposal on paper?
I could have it tomorrow.
Okay, so if we could still just do this, and then basically, we can take a look at the budget, and would that be appropriate, City Clerk, if we pass this at the next meeting, but still give?
Next meeting is August 21st.
August 21st.
Or you could change the motion to include a budget allotment pending approval. In the interim, while you're considering that, Counsel Walizer, I apologize, you haven't actually been on the screen, so I haven't been able to see if you've had your hand up at all. Did you have any questions? Oh, we can't hear you, Counsel Walizer. Just one second. The city manager's gonna fix the technical glitches. Anybody else have any questions? Well, we're waiting for our opportunity for Counsel Walizer to speak. Oh, hang on.
There we go. Should be able to.
Counsel Walizer, one more.
Thank you. My actual inclination for any large requests is to defer to budget. I would prefer not to fund additional art projects for this year. So, to me, that would allow the Arts Council to proceed immediately with the $10,000 that they do have. But I would not want to make a more sizable contribution until the budget deliberations this fall.
And I just have a question. You said any additional art projects, so what other art projects have you funded?
Just the, the $40,000 that we currently give to the Art Council.
Oh, yeah, I don't get much of that. Okay, all right, just want to help, just want to beautify the city. I will just do, if that's the, y'all decide, let me know. I will do my small projects and call her good.
So, the official motion is just to get you to give us an actual report, a formal report of what you would like to see done this year, as well as your wish list.
Okay.
And I would think that that would include preferable, preferably to have estimated costs for the wish list, if you have them, rough guesses anyways. And then council can at least deliberate a little bit more, but that's the actual motion on the floor. Does anybody have any other questions? If not, I will call all in favor. Carried. So, Gail, we will ask you to put a report together and send it off to, oh, oh, sorry, Counsel Clark was opposed. Apologies. Gail, we will ask you to put a report together and send it off to City Clerk, just giving us what your kind of dollar figure amounts for different projects are in your whole wish list, and then we can go from there, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we get you to do. You bet. Okay, next on the list, Building Official Resignation of Shay Woleski. Unfortunately, we had Mr. Woleski join the city, but did not end up staying very long. So, City of Estevan, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as the Building Official. My last day of employment with the City of Estevan will be on July 7th, 2023. Firstly, I'd like to offer my deepest apologies for any inconvenience for this may have caused. And secondly, I would like to thank the city for providing me the opportunity and staff at City Hall for their support while learning the role of Building Official. Unfortunately, cost of living, today's economy has caused me to force me to seek more gainful employment. I believe is in the best interest of my family. I assure the city will do everything in the power to facilitate a smooth transition and provide any necessary support. So, we'll thank Shay for, for coming onboard. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to stick around with us, so I guess I just need a motion to accept his resignation. Counselor Cernik, seconded by Counsel Ford. All in favor? Carried. And that posting, has that posting gone out, City Manager?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on, Pickleball Club Request for Expanded Courts. We have a letter from Pickleball, the fastest-growing sport in North America. Do we have somebody speaking on this? Nope, doesn't look like it. Estevan Pickleball Club is relatively new group. Started in 2019, had 10 members. In 2020, we grew to 14 members, had drop-ins. All sorts of people. Does anybody have any questions on the report? I'm not gonna read the whole thing out, because it's quite long. Counsel Walizer, I think it'll go to you first.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we defer this conversation to budget as well, as there will be a considerable cost associated. And the club has already identified in their letter that they would be looking for city support to fight these changes.
Sure. It does look like in their letter, just want clarification, maybe City Manager, that we're looking for probably about $4,000. So, yep, so Counselor Ford.
I'd be okay seconding this motion. We're already halfway through July. By the time they get somebody to paint it, I, I don't believe this will probably be, like, this probably won't be done by the fall anyway, so I'm certain that they'll have it done by next season if we choose to support this, so I'm okay seconding that motion.
Counsel Roba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I think actually it's great to have a pickleball league here. Everything I hear, even from people that I've met from other town, coming in and talking about pickleball, and it just seems to be the new great sport, and I think it's a good thing that we have people interested in our community in it. But I would like to see, just also here from our city staff, to check out if this is the exact location where the pickleball should be played, or should we have courts that are actually built and designed in another area so that they're not sharing, like, oh, Council City Manager can speak to that?
Thank you, Counsel Roba. We are looking at that currently to see what they, we do understand pickleball is growing. So, we're just going to price out what kind of development those courts looks like in different areas. So, we should have that at budget, and if the tennis courts are the most suitable area, we can proceed at that time. But we are kind of looking into that just on the side over at Legion.
Perfect, that's good to hear, because that's, I think, from what I hear, we're gonna get more and more people wanting to play that, and so I think it would be great if our city started a league. And obviously, the people who did this report are interested in moving that forward too, so it'd be good to see them. Thank you.
Oh, Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just in that discussion, during the 2016 Summer Games, we resurfaced tennis courts at the comprehensive school, and I think they have never been used. So, if we're looking for a place to, to displace the tennis to it, we could probably approach the school and see if that's possible.
Sure. Counsel Cernik.
So, just, it doesn't really say, but they're currently playing at our tennis courts behind the, they just don't really know. That was all.
Sure. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor? Carried. We will defer that to the budget. Next up, under Written Reports of Committees, we have the Estevan Public Library Minutes of June 20th, 2023. Those minutes are in your package to read. I believe Counselor Roba is on that board, correct? Counsel Roba, do you have anything to tell us about the library these days?
No, just acceptance and approval, and actually, just for the library, there is no meetings for me now till September 19th, but it is a great library, and go check it out. There's lots of programming throughout the summer, and they also have a lot of great fall programming coming up, which is also in the minutes, if anybody is interested in checking that out on the city website.
Fantastic, thanks, Counsel Roba. Do we need a motion for acceptance and approval? Oh, she made the motion. Seconder, Counsel Ford. All in favor? Carried. Next up, the Minutes of Suris Valley Museum, Minutes from June 14th, 2023. I actually, who sits on this board now? Is that Counsel Roba as well? Okay. I have to try to remember where everybody sits now. Counsel Roba, any comments on the Suris Valley Museum?
Just that the Red River Cart was installed. We may about to talk about that last meeting, and Counselor Ford was the spokesperson for the city, I believe, at the installation, so thank you for that. And also, they have a new picture-taking spot out at the museum. So, if anyone's interested in going out there and having your picture taken, you can stick your head through some very nicely painted boards that will look like you're the old farming-type community. So, that's a good family venture, and then also, all the camps are actually full right now. So, again, it's a great place to visit the museum. If you haven't been there in a while, stop in, and I will do acceptance and approval on that report.
That's great. Any other questions? Otherwise, seconder, Counsel, Counsel Clark's second. All in favor? Carried. Next up, Water Services Manager, Waste Water Treatment Pilot Project Tender. This is a table project. I believe we have the wastewater, Shane is here this evening to talk to us about this. Thanks for coming. If you want to take it away.
So, basically, this was part of the project of seeing what potentially new wastewater plant we would have to go forward with if the Shand Power Station were to shut down. So, this project was to, we had three options to make two of them an option for us with getting Water Security Agency approval. So, Magna did the engineering. They enkindled to us, and we applied to FCM for the grant, and this was the tendering for the project. We, no one submitted a tender for the project, so it kind of puts us in a bind of trying, going back to the drawing board and figuring out how we get this project up and going this year, with, still with, being within the FCM grant. So, I met with Magna today. They're gonna reach out to FCM to make sure whatever we do plan is gonna work and to still be eligible for the funds.
Sounds good. Questions for Waste Water Manager? Counsel Roba.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you for all your hard work too, and trying to work with them to get this project going, because this project, if it does go forward, will save the city a lot of money in the end with the affluent, right? So, yeah, so thank you, and thank you for continuing to work with Magna to try and find a plan to move forward.
Thank you.
My only, Counsel Cernik, sorry, you go ahead.
I was just asking, like you were saying, that there was no tender, tenders presented or anything like that, so obviously, you kind of feel just local, local contractors would be able to take care of it, or, and yourself, I guess?
That's what the plan is. Whenever you're dealing with government grants and things like that, it's just to make sure that you're going through the right process to award the work. It was a lot of kind of smaller, different trades and things like that coming together, where there wasn't a local company that felt comfortable in doing that. So, if I have no tenders, I just have to find out from FCM where I can move forward with that and work with everyone as much local as I can to get this project up and going.
Thanks for all your hard work on this, Shane, and this is just one more thing. We'll make sure to remind SASC Power when they're telling us what their plans are, that we can't even get people to try to tender this project. They don't want it. So, I think maybe they'll just have to keep running Shand would be the solution. That would be easier, wouldn't it? Sure. I need a motion to accept the report as submitted. Counselor Cernik, I'm gonna get Counsel Walizer's name on the books. Sorry, Counsel Ford. All in favor? Carried. Next up is the Water Services Manager Water Quality Report for June 2023. Hey, you're here this time. You might as well give us a nice little update on the report, because we do it every month without you.
Basically, our summer flows have increased. There has been a taste and odor issue that has been moving through. That is caused by LJ in there. I am flushing the line at night so that we don't have stagnant water kind of creep up. So, we're just, everyone can see the waterfall feature at the front of the water plant. That's what we're doing to try to improve the water quality.
Fantastic, and as I've seen, oh, Counsel Cernik.
Do we have a reason why Rafferty has so much LJ? Is there something that we can do to? Because it seems a little absurd this year, like down by where the water intake is, how green it is down there. Like, it's, it's a little absurd, actually.
So, the best way to do it is by water flow or flushing. So, the reservoirs are kind of building up in demand, and there hasn't been a lot of flushing, because they've kind of had them at operational level. So, it's just a whole bunch of stagnant water, which breeds more LJ. It's kind of a known problem with surface water. It wasn't planned to be so noticeable in the design, because we are so far deep underneath the water. It was figured that this wouldn't happen. There are known fixes, but they are very, very expensive to build and operate.
Counsel Roba.
So, the LJ in the water that causes the smell is not actually harmful to- So the LJ in the water that causes the smell is not actually harmful to anyone drinking the water?
Correct, and we've done increased testing. Any complaints we've had, we've gone out to their homes and tested the water, and it's been well within parameters over and above.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Shane. Um, do we need a motion to accept the report? Counselor Roba?
I have acceptance and approval.
Seconder, Counselor Clark. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, Shane. Uh, once again, you're welcome to stay. I don't know if we need you later, but if not, you're welcome to also go home and enjoy your life. We won't blame you. Next up, Land Development. Thank you, Richard, for coming. The Development Appeals Board Appointment of Norm Mack. If you'd like to speak to this.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and Counsel. Yeah, we, uh, we've, we've been running short on our appeal board membership uh, for the last year or two, but then we have, the last, uh, appeal we had was in, uh, twenty twenty-one. So this, we don't meet that often. Uh, we have an appeal coming up, and we have a, uh, conflict of interest for one of our members, so I don't have Quorum anymore. So I'd, I'd like to get this matter dealt with in a timely manner. Uh, I've met with the city clerk, and advertising has, is going in, uh, to try and, uh, get some more people interested. Uh, we have capacity for five members on the board. Uh, Quorum is three. I'm down to two for this appeal. And since he's no longer an employee here, I hit Mr. Mack up, and, uh, he said that the city's been good to him over the years, and he'd be interested in fulfilling this role.
If Counselor Roba a question?
Uh, actually, thank you. Um, you, Richard, you answered my question, because there's two Norm Macks in the city of Estevan, so I just wanted to clarify which Norm Mack you had recruited, so.
The one I know.
Excellent, that's what I thought, but.
These darn small towns with two people in the same name, right? Counselor Clark.
I'll make the motion that we accept that.
Oh, sorry, and then, okay, you'll make that motion. Counselor Wolizer had a question.
I will second the motion, but to Richard, are we advertising for those remaining positions in addition to appointing Norm Mack?
That is being worked on, yes.
Thank you. If someone is interested, can they call you directly?
They can call me to, uh, obtain more information as to what the position entails. Applications generally are normal practices for them to be submitted to City Clerk.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, so the motion is seconder. Uh, does anybody have any other questions? If not, all in favor? Carried. Well, we'll welcome Mr. Mack back to his role here in the city of Estevan. He didn't last very long. Next up, Land Development, Daycare Permit for nineteen twenty Willack Road. Uh, that is you as well.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, this is the site with the church of God, and what this is going to be, or what's planned here, is a before and after-school hours and during the summer daycare facility within the gymnasium of the church, so parking is provided, services are provided within the building. Uh, the proposal was referred out as a discretionary use to neighboring landowners. The only inquiry I received was one related to whether or not there's going to be an outdoor playground attached to this. And, uh, an outdoor facility is not part of this permit that would require a totally new application at that time if that were to happen.
Sure. Any questions, comments? Counselor Roba.
Sorry, I missed what you said. Uh, Richard, you said it's a before and after-school program, and then another use?
Uh, during the summer.
Oh, okay.
During the day, during the summer.
So it would be a full-time. Um, so is, this is different from the other, uh, daycare that had asked for the permit? Okay, no. So when do we foresee any issues if an outdoor space was to be asked for? Um, after we issue this permit? Because if it's going to be used for kids for an entire summer, I would assume at some point, if it's an all-day daycare, they would want to go outside.
Yeah, i- if this business takes off and, and they would like to, uh, become a permanent feature all year round, uh, they may want to put in a playground. That would require a new permit for the playground.
But there is a room there, so that wouldn't be an issue.
There is, oh, there, there's lots of room on that property. Um, the individual that called asking about the playground didn't express that they were against the playground. They were just wondering if a playground would be included as part of this proposal.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can, oh, Counselor Cernic? Oh, Counselor Cernic's making a motion to accept. Uh, seconder? Counselor Ford. All in favor? Carried. Next up, Land Development. Richard, we've got you here for about an hour or so yet.
Evening, Richard.
Stay seated. Okay, no, no, no. Uh, Land Development Lot Consolidation of Lot nineteen and twenty A, Block forty-one, Plan one-two-six-seven-five.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this is a, um, issue that was, uh, brought forward last year, but my department had spent quite a bit of money on surveying last year with the city, uh, yard project, so we, I postponed it to this year. Uh, normal practice under building code and what have you is to have all the, uh, properties that a building sits on within the same title. So these are two properties that are under ownership of the city, uh, for the EPS building and parking lot, and this proposal would consolidate the two into one title. Nothing would have to be changed for any of the servicing or anything else.
Any questions? Counselor Clark.
I'll make that motion.
Seconder, Counselor Cernic? Any other questions? If not, all in favor? Carried. We'll move through these quick. Next up, F, uh, Land Development, Sass Tell Tower, Hillside Park.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, last time that we were speaking regarding communication towers, there was a request for an open house to be held and hosted by Sass Tell. That was done in last week of June. Uh, there were zero attendees at that, uh, open house, but it was advertised and what have you. Uh, for this particular proposal, Hillside Park, uh, I did receive one inquiry regarding it. It was in opposition. Uh, the opposition wasn't related to any of the issues on telecommunications towers that are within the municipal mandate. All right, so the only issues that we've identified as staff and have already talked to the people, uh, responsible, um, the existing tower, as people recall, at this site is right near the west entrance to the park, and the dog park is right there too. So, when the, uh, if this is approved, when the tower is erected, not necessarily the pedestal, but for the tower itself, and then afterwards, when the existing tower is removed, the, uh, city parks needs to be, uh, notified so they can, so that can be coordinated. It's quite possible that the dog park in that entrance to the park may have to be shut down during that construction phase. And then, of course, as always, coordination with roads and drainage for temporary road closures and what have you. Other than that, no issues identified.
Richard, just one question for myself quickly, just to confirm, once this is completed, um, and the old tower's removed, all we're really talking about is a larger tower then, correct?
It's taller.
Taller.
It's a taller tower. Uh, the other nice thing that council may want to, uh, uh, be aware of is, uh, these three permits that are in front of you tonight, uh, if these three permits are approved, I've been told by, uh, representatives at Sass Tell that there will most likely not be any further tower proposals within the city limits for probably at least a decade when the next generation comes out. Uh, if anybody's wondering about, uh, telecommunications towers on the west end of the city, I guess those towers were built high enough and sturdy enough when they went in so that they can, uh, accommodate new technology going forward, so this'll be it.
Counselor Ford had a question?
And just to clarify this for the millionth time, we have no control over what that tower gets put up there. We just control the space and the everything. The Sass Tell says they're putting up a tower. We have no say in the four G, the five G, the one G, whatever G's.
The equipment that goes up, yes, we have no control over it.
Just to clarify that again, because we do get a lot of questions and concerns about it. The city has no control over that.
Perfect. Uh, anybody else? If not, can I get a motion? Counselor Cernic? Counselor Clark? All in favor? Now, the next one, since we've asked the questions, we're gonna go through quickly. Sass Tell Tower McDonald Road.
This one, uh.
Oh, sorry, did we get an all in favor for that one? Sorry, all in favor for that last one. I'm new to this. Give me a break. Judy's leaving me with dirty looks. All right, Sass Tell Tower.
The, uh, particular questions on this one, and, and this one again, here at this site, I've conferred with Sass Tell on this. As everyone in council is aware, there's a fair amount of summer construction going on in that part of the city, so a temporary road closure, a dislocation for the construction phase would have to, again, be coordinated with roads and drainage so that we don't wind up with people not being able to get out of certain neighborhoods. As well, um, similar to, uh, the Hillside Park, uh, location, we have a pathway in proximity to this tower, so there'll have to be coordination with the, uh, parks as well on that one. Other than that, no issues identified.
Any questions? If not, Counselor Roba.
And they would be aware of our pathway there, so any heavy equipment, if it was to damage the pathway, they would be liable to replace it?
Yes, there is a fair amount of distance between the pathway and this, uh, particular facility with the site, but if the, uh, tower were, for example, to fall over, it, we could potentially, uh, cross over where the pathway is, so that part of the pathway will probably have to get shut down, I would imagine.
Yeah, I was just thinking if they have to take heavy equipment over top of the pathway at all, then it may cause some damage, but just so we're aware of that, and.
Yeah, there, there's a permit that anybody working on public road right-of-way or what have you has to obtain from city engineering, and that obtain, that includes, uh, liability clauses for any damage they may cause to a curb or anything.
Excellent, thank you. Um, yeah, I will make the motion for the Hillcrest area, since it's my area.
Perfect. Counselor Ford, seconding. All in favor? Carried. And lastly, the Sass Tell Tower at eleven thirteen Fourth Street.
This one's directly across the street from City Hall, uh, if anyone's interested. Uh, there is an existing tower at that location. This, uh, new proposed tower will be higher again uh, than the existing one. Uh, originally, they were looking at, uh, or considering it possibly putting it uh, closer to Fourth Street from the existing tower, and I asked them if they could, uh, ask Sass Tell if they could try to find a site that would be no closer to Fourth Street than the existing tower. Uh, they were, uh, Sass Tell was able to work cooperatively with SAS Power, and so this new, uh, tower location will be between the laneway and existing tower, so I would imagine most people, unless you're looking way up, you're not even gonna see it. This, again, on this one, there'll have to be coordination for possible lane closure with roads and drainage.
Questions, comments? If not, can I get a motion? Counselor Wolizer would like to make that motion, seconded by Counselor Clark. You betcha, Counselor Wolizer. Seconded by Counselor Clark. Anybody else? If not, all in favor? Perfect. All right, one last one for you, Richard. Single da- detached dwelling at eight oh one Valley Street.
Thank you. Uh, this, uh, proposal, the, the property was originally zoned for medium-density development, so that would be like for a fourplex or a sixplex. This is a single detached dwelling. It would replace an existing dwelling that's going to be torn down on the property. Uh, but, uh, it's a discretionary use, so it goes to council, and there are a couple of variances that would be necessary to accommodate the proposal. Uh, if you look at the sketch, you'll see that it's a bit of an odd-shaped lot. It's not, nine degree corners everywhere. Myself, where I'm satisfied that this proposal will work at this location, it's a pretty wide road right-of-way at that location, so I'm recommending that, uh, council approve this proposed dwelling with these variances, uh, given.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is, uh, the house they're moving in a new construction house?
It's brand-new construction, gonna be. It, it is, they're calling it an RTM. It's a brand-new home, and, uh, it'll be set, set on a foundation there with attached garage.
Any questions? Counselor Cernic, you're gonna make the motion to approve? Seconder, Counselor Clark. All in favor? Carried. Just, oh, sorry, Counselor Clark.
Just as follow-up, uh, city administrator, could we make sure, that's one of the road where we've talked about. It's like there's only a couple of residential roads that aren't paved, that we could make sure that it gets in the budget to see if we can maybe pave that road?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Clark. Yeah, I just wrote that down as this came up. Uh, I will get a estimate ASAP on that, and yeah, we can take it to budget, especially with two new homes there. I think that's, would be prudent in that area for sure.
Perfect. All right, I think you are off the hook. I have the building official.
For the public portion at least, yeah.
That's not you. So you are off the hook for the evening now, or at least for the rest of this meeting. I don't know if we need you for the following, so I'm not gonna say that. We'll just let you off the hook for this, for this portion of the meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Richard. Next up, the Building Official Permit Report, June twenty twenty-three. Anybody has that? Any questions? Comments, concerns? If not, can I get a motion to accept the report? Counselor Ford, Counselor Cernic? All in favor? Carried. Nothing under induction, introduction of bylaws, public hearings, giving notice, motions from committee or consideration of bylaws, so I will go straight to inquiries. Counselor Roba.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, some of you may have remembered last meeting. I did not have any, so this time I have a few. Um, basically, one of the things that I will be coming to council, that from the museum, we're just gonna do some more investigation, is the mine equipment that is there. Some of it's in need of some, uh, restoration, so that would be something on our radar coming down the pipe. The other thing is, I had a couple of calls regarding weeds around the city, um, specifically in the area over by the cemetery, and, um, also by Hawks Bay onto Willack Road there with the lots by the, um, right by the hospital there, and across the street, that area is actually really good this year. So the callers mentioned that, um, that side of the street is sometimes the problem area, but this time it's our side of the street, so I just wanted to put it out there that I would like it if in the future at any cost, that we could not have city lots being called in, just because, um, it's usually when someone else owns the property, that's the city coming knocking on their door. And I know that could be a cost to the budget, because they're probably being prudent with the amount of area to spray, so it's not that our staff isn't maybe getting them sprayed, it's just that some of the sprays that we use in the community, I believe, are also restricted for the environment regulations, so I think that we have to actually do them more often, which is probably a concern for city council, because um, if I'm correct in that assumption, then we will have to put out some more money next year or even this year in the weed department, but City Manager, uh, do you know anything at all about that?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Roba. No, I don't. I'll have to talk to Parks Department about, uh, how often those are sprayed or.
Okay, yeah, and if we could.
If there is any others, please let me know.
Yeah, and if we could maybe just see where they are in their budget, or if we need to, um, figure out, because I know it, it is hard when they're, we're saying, like, spray these weeds, but yet, there's environment restrictions. I think we found that even with the paint. We're saying paint these lines, but then there's environment restrictions on the paint, so then they go away, so sometimes it's not always that we're not aware of the issue, it's just that we have to follow within the guidelines. Um, another issue was behind Nicholson Road, right at the end, um, with, uh, Morsekey Drive. If you go behind that first, uh, row of duplexes, the lady that came to me was quite concerned about a big hill that's back there, and she said it's been back there since the developers were there, and they basically didn't reclaim the land to where they found it, so it's a hill, and she said it's got some cement pile in there, and, but her concern is the big red ants that are now invading her property. So she would like to see if the city can remove that hill and just basically throw some grass seed down or something, um, just so that maybe the ants can go away somewhere else. So again, I don't know the cost of that, or if that's just something that we can look into. And I think that's the end of my list. Thank you.
Nothing tonight. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
Counselor Wolizer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Ford?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In our busyness in the last couple of months, or I guess month and a half since we've been, or month since we've been away, we forgot to congratulate Brayden Pahal on being a Stanley Cup champion, so congratulations to Brayden. We look forward to seeing him around this summer. He's back in town, so we're looking forward to hearing some of his stories from, from hockey.
Sure, I'll applaud. Nobody else wants to. Counselor Cernic? Hello, dear. Slow clap for Braden.
It was Vegas. Anyways, just had a, about a fight, looking to get an up-to-date fire inspection for Affinity Place. And I just had a few inquiries about that. That way, we can just say everything's kind of looked after on our end. The trees at the mall were trimmed already, I see. So you did quick work this afternoon. And I just want to say the water tower looked very cool on Canada Day. So, that's all you?
I had lots of great comments about that as well. So thank you very much, Counsel Sernick. City manager? City clerk? City treasurer? The only one I had is just from the Service Valley Theater. They just finished their Rantsers and Wrestlers 2 performance, which was fantastic. If you got a chance to see it, over 1,500 tickets sold. So they're really excited. That was great numbers. They have Brenda Lee Cottrell coming up on July 22nd. And the AR Cash, which is a Johnny Cash tribute, coming up on August 24th. Both shows are already over 50% sold out. So if you'd like tickets, get them in advance because they might not be available at the door. And then Stag and Doe is a comedy, their next performance, which is July 31st through August 11th. And tickets are on sale now for that. So, Counsel Roba?
I just wanted to say that just to watch for the upcoming, with Counsel Ford mentioning Braden Pahal, the rumor has it, the Stanley Cup will be coming to Estevan. So the details will follow between Braden Pahal, the Golden Knights, and city manager. Those details will come out. So yeah, we can't release anything yet because everything has to go through the Golden Knights. So we don't want to step on any toes or rain on his parade. So basically, just look for those details.
Thanks, Counsel Roba. Well, thank you, everybody. And with that, I will get a motion to go into closed. Counsel Clark, seconder, Counsel Ford, all in favor? Carried. That's everything. Good night. Dave, I want the record for the longest.